Thank you, everyone, for joining us today at the Township Trustee Meeting of October 23rd. If we could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first, we'll start with public comment. If anybody wants to share with us, just head on up to this first podium here and let us know your name.
Hello? Is it working? Thank you for having me. And I sent these via email. I did make a few changes, if you were able to read them earlier today, but I gave them-
Can you give us your name? Sorry.
Sorry. I gave him a correct copy of what I'm going to say to you, but my name is Maureen DeVanzo. I live at 1030 Parkway Trail in Bloomfield Chase. I am- some of my neighbors have been here to address the special land use proposal by the Bloomfield Christian Schools the first meeting or two. So I would like to provide a little more comments on that before you take a vote. First, I wanted to provide a little bit of brief history of the formation of the Bloomfield Christian School. And if you don't mind, could I just refer to it as BCS further on?
Sure.
Thank you.
The only piece of advice I'd give you is that there is a time limit, so-
What is my time limit?
Two minutes now.
Okay.
Well, we have your written statement. Everybody has a copy.
Okay. Well, if you've got that-
We do.
So they became the owner. Really, what the whole- this whole basis of why the residents of Bloomfield Chase aren't happy is there was a variance given of 2.6 acres. I spoke to somebody at the township. This is a private school, not a public school. They're not adhering to what the parameters are for public schools. They're going- and if you know anything, they have a campus on 12 Mile and Southfield. And it's like a Bigfoot house in Birmingham where they've taken up every space. Now, if you've read all of what I have to say, then I will just say personally, and my neighbors here live next door to me on Parkway Trail, the light pollution and the noise pollution is ongoing. And in your proposal, they're limited to 12 hours during the weekdays and 13 hours on the weekends. That allows us no peace or harmony in our own home at all. I called last week. It was after nine o'clock, and people are in the parking lot talking. The lights are shining into my window. I don't feel- I like- the school is a good school. They're doing a lot of good in the community, but we try to be good neighbors to them, and they keep asking for more and more from the residents. In your answers with the proposal, with the process this has gone through, it indicated that there was going to be no substantial harm to the nearby residents. I'd be happy to put my house on Airbnb for a few weeks, and each of you could go over there and spend a few days there and see if you thought there was no- not going to be any substantial devaluation or harm by the problems of- because we already have this soccer ball. If you've read this, you know that the soccer balls come right through the screening that they were supposed to put up, which was- it's not adequate. Doesn't screen the lighting. It doesn't screen the balls. Children should not be racing across that street to chase a ball because somebody's coming south and won't ever see them. There's no chance. What you're- the batting cages, two batting cages, two baseball bats, you're allowing 13 hours a day on the weekends when I might want to entertain?
Wrap it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would like you to really seriously consider the broad spectrum of hours and operation and activity that I don't see. And if you'll read my proposal, no other school in the area has this. This master plan the township had was for schools. There's a half school, half mile away. So this is not a necessary. If they're not fitting onto the sight line, they should find another property that better fits their needs. Thank you for your accommodation.
Thank you.
Just come on up to the podium right there.
And I might note, too, that there is a public hearing later upon this topic, which we will invite speakers to speak concerning this issue. So you'd be welcome to speak again. We encourage folks to use the public comment and the public hearing time for conversations about the special land use of the Bloomfield Christian School.
Hello. Thank you for having us. My name is Celia Lakin. My husband, George Lakin, is sitting there. We are at 1040 Parkway Trail, immediately across from the parking lot in- well, the soccer field now, I guess it is. And I think that we have done our best to be accommodating neighbors. I know there was something- I'm trying to remember what event it was, but there was some event and they needed to go a little or something, and it was quite noisy. And we said, fine. I mean, nobody argues with them. Pretty much, I wanted to just voice my agreement with what everything that Maureen has said. It is not adequately screened, especially when the leaves fall off the bushes. Then you can see, right, you know, everything and the noise and the lights and everything come right through. So again, it's a good school. We have no problem with the school, but I think they're just trying to grow and grow and grow. And I'm just in agreement with everything Maureen said. So thank you for hearing me out, and thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have public comment? Again, if this is about the school clerk- if it's- okay, because we will have the public hearing at that time for that. You can each go individually. It's three minutes as- unless you're individuals-
As a group or three minutes individually?
If it's a group, it's three minutes. Individuals get three.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Jen Gray. Nice to talk to you today, Danny. I'm at 60 Forest Lane. Wanted to come bring a situation to your attention. About a week and a half ago, I had hunters show up at my door at 9:30 at night, at the dead of night, and claiming that they had shot a deer with a bow and arrow on another piece of property in our neighborhood, and they believe the deer was expired on my property. I- the police had been involved. They had been on somebody else's property just an hour before. They had come to our house about- in August, asking for permission to hunt on our property, and we said no. It's a long drawn out story that lasted 18 hours. Many of your wonderful police officers in the township who were very attentive came to help me and other neighbors. But we wanted to bring this to your attention because this really is a safety issue. There are many, many children and animals on our street, and when people are hunting with bow and arrows, they don't know property. This deer was alive for 17 hours on my neighbor- the back of my property and my neighbor's property, and it is unsafe. So we wanted to talk to you about- there is an ordinance, Section 20-254, that hunting is prohibited within the township. And it says, "It shall be unlawful for any person to hunt with firearms in and upon any lands or premises in the township." However, bow and arrows are not- it doesn't include specifically that bow and arrows are in that statute. So, you know, we wanted to get some guidance on how to have that considered.
Can I address?
Yeah, normally, we don't address, but just since we already have-
Yes.
-the chief's given you the answer, and I have, and I want you to know-
I can jump in for five minutes.
He's going to give you the legal reason of why we can't do anything, so that might help to hear that.
Okay.
Because I know Jimmy's- our chief's told you, I've told you, we want to make sure that you get a chance to hear it from the legal representative of why the DNR is where you need it. So before-
Sure. Before- and then maybe you can talk about that.
Especially if it's Carrie, because I just responded to your email as well. But let's go ahead and have-
She has 30 seconds. I'll let her, and then I can tell you what our-
I just want to let you know that we can't do anything. We've had the discussion. You've talked with the chief, so I really need you to hear from the lawyer of why you need to go to the DNR to make these requests.
And I just- I really appreciate our discussion today. I just wanted to, you know, let it be known that it is a problem, and, you know, a lot of- all of our neighbors are concerned about the safety. We do have- it's been posted on YouTube. It's been posted on Instagram. We have people randomly texting neighbors, asking if they can come hunt on our- in our street. We have trucks driving up and down our street with their lights off, looking for deer at night. So wanted you to be aware of the situation.
And I know we talked about the DNR today. Most of our thing is about the DNR, who is now taking or trying to take away ordinances that we've had for 50 years because they trump us. So I want you to hear before you speak-
Can I ask-
We're going to go- sorry, we're going to go ahead and interrupt for one second and have you listen to the legal- we're not against what you're saying. We 100%-
Sure.
-what you're saying. You're just preaching to the choir who can't do anything.
Yep.
So I'm going to help you with- he'll give you some ideas of where maybe you could go forward with this.
So state law in the state of Michigan preempts the field. So what that means is the township- currently, the township has no ordinance on the books that prohibits bow hunting or the use or discharge of bow and arrows. I think the ordinance you referred to, 220, I think that was adopted years and years and years ago. I believe it then repealed at the time that we codified the codes of ordinances. But even if it has it, it doesn't really matter because it's a field that's preempted by the state, hunting is. There is a specific law that allows for regulation of discharge of firearms in the- discharge of firearms includes anything that is propelled by an explosion, bow and arrows. So that law doesn't give us the ability to pass an ordinance in that effect. We can't pass- we can't- the Township Board can't unilaterally pass an ordinance regulating either hunting or the use of bow and arrows in the township. There is a procedure where the DNR can approve- recommend something and approve it, but we've gone down that path before, and I believe, and Danny, correct me if I'm wrong, that the DNR has denied us.
They actually came to us with hunter intimidation claims.
Right.
So we have, as recently as 2021, tried, and they doubled down. If the township ever tries this again and ever has anything, they will come at us with hunter intimidation.
So the long-
So the more we say it, the worse it gets.
So the long and the short of it is, it can't on its own adopt an ordinance to regulate what you're describing.
Can I ask about the Michigan Township Act, though?
Sure.
That the Township Board of any charter township, the power to enact ordinances considered necessary to provide for the public peace and health and for the safety of persons and property in the charter township. I believe this would fall under safety.
Townships have the ability to do- to adopt ordinances that address just what you said, unless the field is preempted by state law, and in this case, it is.
They're higher than- they- we just- they say we can't do.
So, since we are preaching to the choir-
We can take this offline.
Yeah.
Because I know I've already responded to your email. We've had a call. We can take it offline, but we can't- whether we agree with it or not, we can't do it. So I just-
Okay. I guess our next- and we'll take it offline, is finding out what do we do then? Because-
We had a great conversation in the email I sent you is, start with Jen of what we talked about today.
The DNR?
That's where your problem lies. Well, actually, with your neighbor- State is the DNR.
That is the state.
The Department of Resources-
What do I mean? I'm sorry, like a state rep? Would that be?
They can go to the DNR for you, but you really need to gut to the DNR. Yeah.
Okay.
Or your neighbors. Talk with your neighbors and ask them to stop.
Yeah, but that's not all of- you know, Bloomfield Township, I know many of you have kids. I mean, that's- we're here to try to protect all of our- your residents.
I'm sorry. We just legally can't do that. I'm so sorry. We legally can't do what you wish and we want as well. But again, Jen and I had a conversation today, and I sent you an email. But I would suggest starting there.
Okay.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you. And it's not about the hunting. It's about the safety of our neighborhoods, really.
Right.
Yeah. So, thank you for hearing us.
Thank you for coming.
Does anyone else have a public comment not related to the later public hearing? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment. Next, we'll go to the board minutes of October 9th. Unless there's any changes or suggestions or discussion, I look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Marie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That does pass. Next, we'll go to considering the acceptance of the UHY independent audit of March 31st, 2023, financial statements. And we have- Michael, I don't want to mess up your last name.
Santichia.
Santichia. Santichia. I would have definitely messed up that name. One of the partners
at Marlene Beach is the principal.
So we are going to present in PowerPoint format the results of our audit that we had. Our biography. So the following presentation represents a summary of the overall government activities and business type activities of the Charter Township of Bloomfield. Specific fund presentation slides that we're going to show next are some of the funds that we did audit, but not all the funds noted. We did look at all the funds overall in the audit. So the highlights in yellow are the major funds that we determined. And there was a new fund set up this year, the opiate settlement fund, which was the new fund. And there's a slide next to that. So the opiate fund is- was new in 2023 and is used to account for the revenues and expenditures related to the settlements received from the distributors and manufacturers of opioids. Opioids. The fund is restricted for use to fight the crisis on the opioids. The township will receive a percentage of the amount of the nationwide settlement that was allocated to Michigan, and there's the website on there that you could link to show what Bloomfield Township is entitled to. Accounting standards require that we communicate to the administration certain matters regarding our audit work and what we did. And again, this is our audit report. We've audited, you know, the fiscal year, financial statements, and we are giving you an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level opinion that we can give. Again, we- our accounting standards require that we provide you certain information, but our responsibilities under general accepted accounting standards. Some of those were communicated to you in our engagement letter dated in May. There's some more following. The accounting policies that you see in Note 1 of the financial statements are management's to make. Part of our audit is that we make sure you are following those policies, which you were. You did adopt- the township did adopt a new- adopted GASB 87, so a new policy, and that was based mainly about leases. So now, the general fund, you'll see, there's a new category on it that Marlene will talk about in her presentation. There's a receivable and a corresponding deferred inflow regarding those leases. Counting- same with accounting estimates. Management makes those. As part of our audit, we make sure they're reasonable, and they were. We had no significant audit adjustments. We did have one, and that's when we had to book the present value of the opiate settlement that you had. Please report, no disagreements with the township management over the course of the audit. We're not aware that there was any other consultations with other accountants, and there was no issues discussed with management prior to our appointment. Again, Jason and his team did a fantastic job. They were very well prepared, got us everything timely, so we had no difficulties. Again, he was very well prepared, and we were able to get the audit done. Some other items we did, we did conduct fraud interviews with management and a board trustee. No instances of fraud were reported to us. Part of the audit- the items that we tested as part of the audit always had sufficient documentation and the appropriate audit support, which includes documentation and the approval by whoever was supposed to approve those expenditures. We also did a test of sample of the expense reimbursements. All that we tested as part of the audit had sufficient and appropriate audit support, which included documentation and approval of those expense reports. Same with the credit card statements. All items that were tested on part of- as part of the audit had sufficient and appropriate documentation and support and approval. Some highlights, there was no expenditures in excess of the required budgeted amounts. The township received some ARPA funds of a little over 4.4 million, which was received as of March 31, 23. As of March 23, none of those funds have been spent, but the township has allocated a portion of these for a ladder truck of about $1.8 million currently. The rest of the funds have to be obligated by the end of '24. So you have to 1231, '24 to allocate the rest of the funds. Significant capital purchases made during this past year were some safety equipment, safety path construction, and improvements to the water and sewer infrastructure.
All right. I'm going to take over with the graphs and everything. The first one just kind of shows the funding of the pension status. As you know, it kind of goes up and down. It did take a little dip this year. It was 90- about 90% last year. It was 83. That's a direct function of basically the economy. Assets go down when investments go down, so they were the unrealized value at the time, which contributed to your funding status going from 90 to 83. Still, a good percentage, one of the higher ones in the state. So again, we've seen that with all our municipalities where their rates went down due to market conditions. OPED funding status is at about 23% this year. Seems to step a little bit from last year. There's not a lot of investments for that fund. That's why you didn't see a dip in it, but so you are at about 23% on that. Okay, the next slide talks about general fund assets. Okay, assets are what the township owns. As you can see, total assets went up from 18.4 last year to about 23.6. As Mike mentioned, there is a new item on the balance sheet here. That's a lease receivable. That's of almost $3 million. That's the net present value of the lease payments to be received over the term of the lease. Once again, it is new this year. There is a corresponding deferral that goes with it. So that's a- that's why- one of the reasons your assets went from about 18.4 to about 23.6. You know, it's a little change, some change in the cash and the marketable securities, and that was a movement of money from one type of fund to the other. Money market funds are considered cash and cash equivalents. That's why they were- they're shown in that line as opposed to your marketable security lines. You mentioned the receivable for the lease. Now, you'll see something deferred inflows of resources, leases. That's just- that's kind of the opposite part that goes with this. So you've got your receivable up here, and then on the bottom half, you've got your deferred inflows, money that's going to be coming into the township over the years. Once again, brought down to net present value. Your other big receivable on there is the ARPA funds. It was 2.2 last year. You did receive the rest of your funds from ARPA, so it's at now 4.47. The fund balance went from 15.7 to about 16.2 this year, so we had to increase a little under $300,000. Excuse me. The next one, it's revenue- general fund revenues. As you can see, everything is fairly consistent. Taxes were up this year, 9.8 compared to about 9.3 last year. State revenue sharing also went up about $300,000 this year. So you went from 19.1 to about 27. Those are the two big things that triggered that. Yeah, let me go back one. So also noticed the investment earnings in 2022. They were about $325,000. Pleased to say, this year, they're about 1.2. So we are seeing a rebound in the market. So that was about, you know, almost a million dollar swing in the township for revenue for this past year. General fund expenditures, about 9.6 last year, and right about 10.2 this year. These are, once again, fairly consistent. Had an increase in revenue, therefore, we expect to see a little bit of increase in expenditures, which we did over the year. Another fund, another fund we looked at was water and sewer funds. Once again, we had the movement of the cash and the money market of funds, so you do see a swing in the cash and equivalents versus the investments, just like you did in your general fund. Leases did not affect this, so you do not see that receivable. That was only in the general fund where you have that big lease receivable now. Liabilities, what you owe and net pension- excuse me, net position is what's left. The net position of the water and sewer fund in 2022 was about 73.9, almost 74 million. As of 2023, you're looking at about 81.6. So we do have an increase in the water and sewer fund this year. Revenues went up about 2.5 million this year. Did have some reclassifications and things that you'll see the- the debt service charge beginning in 2023. It was included in the water and sewer fund rates. So when you add the three of those lines, you get 12, 13, and 2 last year. You've got 14 and 16, fairly consistent, but a little increase there. And that was just moving things from one line to the other. Water and fund- yeah, water and sewer fund expenditures, very, very consistent. About 23.5 last year and about 24.5 this year. No major swings in any of the funds we looked at there. Public safety, as I mentioned, the other two, the swing between cash and cash equivalents and marketable securities. Total assets 15.1, 15, about 15.0 this year. Total liabilities, that's basically a function of timing. You know, payables were 7.76 last year. They're 3.64. Just a function of when things get paid. These are as of March 31st, so they would be different as of two days later when the bills are paid. The other one is the unearned revenue from the fire truck grant. The truck is not here yet, so the township has not recorded the revenue yet. Funds have come in, but that's why it is under unearned revenue, and it is a liability until you get the truck ordered, truck is delivered, and then you're going to receive- record that as revenue. Other large fund is public safety. This followed exactly the same. We have taxes up 24.7 last year, 25.9 this year. Everything else is, as you look, the charges for services is almost identical. Public safety expenditures, 27.6 last year, 27.7 this year. I said almost, almost identical. Little differences in some capital outlay this year.
And that's our presentation. Any questions?
Any questions, or?
Yes.
Well, it sounds, as it did last year, sounds outstanding. But are there any areas of concern that we need additional attention?
We did not note anything in the audit this year. Everything, as Mike pointed out, everything, when we looked, asked for something, it was there, and it had sufficient support and approval.
It's great to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, I even asked for a new category, because I feel like if you get perfect this much, you should get, like, perfect plus.
Unfortunately, we-
We were going to put the gold star up there.
Yeah. I thought you would, actually. I was expecting a star.
I just thought of that right now.
Ask for a gold star. Does anyone else have any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Marlene, this is the same question I ask you every year.
Uh huh.
You're a certified fraud examiner. You're on the MICPA Fraud Task Force.
Correct.
You've been deeply involved in our books and records. Do you have any concerns whatsoever from a fraud basis?
No, nothing came to my attention.
You also left out she's a firefighter.
Yes, I am.
Well, if accounting has a fire, we'll know who to call.
I was just saying, as if she wasn't great at that, she also threw fire. It's pretty impressive.
Well, no, we do look for those kinds of items, and that's why we rotate who we talk to-
Right.
-in the city and to different employees so that they have a voice to tell us if something's going on.
Now, so nice to get such a complete and consistent from last year-
Yes.
-the report, and good to always get good grades.
Again, thank Jason and his team, because, you know, we filed it with the state on time. No rush, because everything was ready for us.
Also, thank you. This year, I believe it was trustee Vicky-
Yeah.
-that helped. So each year, they pick a different trustee, and it's picked- we don't know who it is. So thank you to everybody every year who helps on that, too. Keeps us in line. I like it. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
So next, we have the public hearing considering approval of a site plant. Oops, sorry. I jumped ahead. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd be happy to make the motion.
Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Vicky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Thank you. So first, we have the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant application for 2024. And we'll start first with Director Christine DeVara, and then we'll open up public comment after that.
Thank you very much. Senior Services has managed the community, excuse me, development block grant program since 2009. Grants assist low-income seniors with essential home repairs. This service enhances safety and fosters greater independence for them. Would like to thank our friends in the building department for their longtime support of minor home repair. This funding is also crucial for Meals on Wheels. Seniors with mobility challenges receive nutritionally balanced meals, a safety check, and a social connection with volunteer drivers. There we go. The program is designed to benefit low- and moderate-income persons, prevent and eliminate blight, promote decent, affordable housing, extend senior independent living, and improve quality of life. We have completed a hundred and forty projects since the inception of the grant. We have five projects currently underway, and of course, recruiting for new customers all year round. Average cus, the average age of our customers this year is seventy-seven, and the average length of ownership in the township is seventeen years. And the average income is just over thirty-six thousand dollars. The major change for this year is that the county has had to change the public services cap. Normally, we had thirty percent of each allocation that we could spend on public services, but they've changed that to fifteen, and I will explain why. No one is happy about it, but we understand the rationale. The county did this because as a group, there are many communities within the county's contract, and they do all of the work with HUD for all of us communities. And so as a group, we have to have a consolidated cap of fifteen percent. Historically, many communities used one-hundred percent of their funds for facilities improvements, like ADA compliance improvements or housing improvements, and that really balanced overall for all the communities and helped us maintain that fifteen percent grant as a group. But that's really no longer the case. Excuse me, more and more communities are using funds for public services, and so it's not, it's no longer viable, so they made that tough decision. And though we need more public services, we understand that the foundation for these block grant programs truly is housing. So we understand and support it, and we'll look for other ways to help our Meals on Wheels program. Having said that, this year's allocation will be about fifty thousand dollars, and we are proposing eighty-five percent go for minor home repair and fifteen percent go for public services, i.e. Meals on Wheels. Let's see. And so we do have, each project is capped at five thousand, and then each customer is capped at a fifteen-thousand-dollar lifetime maximum, so they can go for up to three projects. Excuse me. The income levels are set by HUD each year, and it's eighty percent of the median area income, and this year, for one person, that's fifty-three thousand and fifty dollars, and for two people, sixty-three, or excuse me, sixty thousand, six hundred dollars. And of course, the homeowner must be sixty years of age or more. So projects primarily include repairs to improve safety, such as electrical, plumbing, and HVAC systems, and we of course, handle accessibility needs, excuse me, needs, such as handrails, ramps, and sidewalks. We do have a few photos of projects that were very successful, and these are, of course, are related to safety and accessibility. The application process requires proof of residency, insurance, income, and several other items, and senior service staff are very glad to help guide people through the So our eligibility for Meals on Wheels is that a person is sixty-two years of age or more and has limited availability to leave the home unassisted, or they have just considerable difficulty driving, grocery shopping, and preparing complete meals independently. So it's not for people that don't drive at all, and it's not just for people who are low-income, and that's a message that we need to do a little bit better job of getting out into the community. Hot meals are available Monday through Friday, recipients may schedule one or three days per week or all five. They may also select a pack of frozen meals for Monday delivery, whichever is most convenient for them. We also have a monthly delivery for liquid meals or liquid nutrition, like Ensure, if needed. The meal service is a key element of the social and safety network for frail or isolated seniors, and annually, we make about thirty phone calls to their emergency contacts, and on occasion, we do have to also tap our friends for EMS intervention. Okay, last year, this past year, we served five thousand eight hundred meals to ninety-five customers, nearly half of whom were over the age of eighty-five, and ninety-four percent are living on their own. These customers, their favorite part, as always, is that contact with our wonderful volunteers, they always say that's their favorite part of the service when we survey them. A newer service that we have is called On the Go Meals, and those are frozen meals available for residents sixty-two-plus who are able to pick them up at the center. And these customers are happy to reduce the amount of cooking they're doing, and also receive these nutritional meals designed specifically for people sixty and above. So our calendar for this grant cycle is here, essentially, there are a number of stages we go through, and in a perfect world, we would have access to these funds next fall, but I will tell you, last year's funds is still in a waiting period, so actually, they're telling us we might not get the approval to spend until January, so that's a hopeful calendar right there. Oh, does anybody have any questions for me?
I think it's a great program, I love that our residents can age in their home, so if a resident wants to apply for one of these grants, who do they reach out to, where do they get the information to do that?
Sure, there is some information on the website, of course, about all of these, but if anyone wants to, we're very happy to receive their phone call, or they can stop in the center, and we're happy to tell them all about it and walk them through the application process.
Perfect, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You and Darren also worked together to kind of streamline the application process, also with the board review.
Yes.
And on that as well.
And we get referrals, so if somebody has applied for their program, and they're not aware of ours, they'll send them over our way, so it's really nice.
Partnership.
No, I think it's a, excuse me, it's a wonderful program, and you bring it to us every year, and it, it's, there's so many great benefits. One of our neighbors just had an issue with their health and said that they, and they are also elderly, and they were able to get Meals on Wheels, and, because they're suddenly stuck home with an illness, and it's like, it's very, very much appreciated by the residents in need, thank you for doing it.
My pleasure, it's a great team effort. I will, though, may I say something in follow-up to that, this year, we noticed in some of the statistics, that there were more short-term people than we've ever had before, so people are aware that they can get it for just the two weeks after maybe knee surgery and they've come home, or maybe just six weeks where they're doing a lot of physical therapy and they're not driving as much. So we saw kind of an uptick in, in short-term use, which we think is a really good thing, people don't have to be on it forever, just we're happy to fill the gap when they need it.
And it sounds like more people are becoming aware, if you're getting an uptick in that use that you didn't before, so the more we can talk about it and share the information. Thank you.
So now we'll open up public comment, does anybody have any public comment related to this specific item? This is the public hearing for this block grant. So we'll close the public comment for this item, and we'll bring it to the board.
Do you want her to read it?
You don't have to, but.
You want to read your resolution?
Oh gee, I don't have it. Caught off-guard, oh no.
But it's in the packet where somebody can most.
If I could borrow a deal, I'll read it.
The motion could simply be to approve the resolution.
I move we approve the resolution in the packet, support.
Support.
For trustee Golinski.
You two are all in favor. Aye.
Aye, all in favor. Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd love to make the announcement about the home loan program. Okay, as the community partners with the county, it offers an additional program for people of any age, homeowners of any age, that would be eligible, eligible, excuse me, for up to twenty-three thousand dollars for a home loan. They have to be income-qualified, and it is a low or no-interest loan for home improvements, and the repayment is deferred until the property changes hands. So again, no age requirements there, and all of those loans are coordinated through the county using county funds, so it's not part of our allocation. So I think that's something else we need to work to get out there a little bit more. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we're going to open up to our next, well, we'll do the presentation and then the public comment on considering approval of a site plan and special land use request for Bloomfield Christian School. And we have director Patty Volker, who will first do the presentation, then we'll open up.
Well, good evening, so tonight, we have a site plan and a special land use for Bloomfield Christian School. They're seeking to make some improvements to their property relevant to some sporting activities, but before I get there, I think we should just identify where we are, we're on Telegraph Road, we're north of Long Lake, we're on the west side. The school is affiliated with the, associated with the development of the property at Bloomfield Hills Baptist Church. The property is owned, single-family, which is part of the review that we will conduct with the request that's before you this evening, and the aerial is showing that this property is a budding residential property. To the north is the Bloomfield Chase condominiums. The single-family residents to the west, those that are fronting on Franklin Road, is the Island Lower Long and Forest Lake Association, and the single-family residents to the south within the Devon Gables Homeowners Association. To just reflect on the area that they are focusing on in proposing a new dual batting cage and a sports court to be added to the campus, this is the area facing south, where this is the current soccer field, and it would be the area just to the south of that net. Facing to the west is the, adjacent to this parking lot, is the vacant area, south of the soccer net, where they will be proposing the batting cage and sports court. And then looking north, on the far side, you're seeing the two sports, the soccer nets, and then the vegetation that is along the northerly property line. And as we've had some comments and questions regarding the location, we have added some additional photos for your review, you know, as you're looking especially at that northerly boundary. So we're starting at the west corner and working towards the east, so this is the northerly soccer net on that northerly edge. As we progress towards the, the east, there's the end of the deciduous trees that were planted as part of the soccer field, and then now you have the, just starting up the parking lot to the, to the right, here is now a view of now the, the beginning of the parking lot, along that, again, northerly vegetation, proceeding a little bit farther east, and almost, this is the second to the last photo, and here is the last section of that northerly vegetation, and to the right would be Telegraph Road. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to see that, you know, as you are considering the comments that you've heard through the various minutes, and as well as the communication that you've received in the, in the packet. So this is the visual that the applicant provided, the time of application, obviously snow on the ground, but it is showing at least the perspective of what is the vegetation that is to your west, to the north, and to the south, as this is being proposed along the westerly edge, if you will, of the site plan. So the, the site plan is, this is the overall depiction of both the Bloomfield Hills Baptist Church property and the Bloomfield Christian School location. The property accesses Telegraph in two curb cuts, there's no proposed changes to the access from Telegraph to the property as it relates to these proposed improvements, the circulation pattern is not changing, relevant to the proposal as well. The, I don't have the pointer. It's in the back here. Let's see what I can. There we go. So these two existing curb, curb cuts are intended to remain as part of the circulation, and the area that we are be focusing on is to the rear of the, the church facility, this is the school location, and this is the area that is primarily their, their playground area, in addition to the soccer, new soccer field that's in this location here. So the proposal to specifically focus on this area of improvement, right off the parking lot, so this is the parking lot area here, they're looking to install a sports court in this east-west orientation, and then just to the west are two batting cages that they're proposing, and this would be just south of where we saw that last soccer netting. This area here is still a playground area, and then there's some tree and vegetation, and then the drive circulates around and hugs that, that southerly property line. So if I could just take a minute and describe what the proposal is entailing, so this is a fifty-by-eighty-four sports court identified as basketball and pickleball, it's adjacent to a thirty-foot-by-seventy-foot-by-twelve-foot-high dual batting cage, as they are found within the rear of the school, and immediately south of the soccer field, it's identified within an outdoor play area. The accessory structure is as a rear yard location, it does comply with a zoning ordinance, the fact that it is accessory structure did require having to go before the zoning board of appeals, and because of the height of the fence for the batting cage exceeded four feet, it had to go before the zoning board of appeals as well. Now, a part of the consideration of a school, improvements to a school as it relates to a special land use, we provided in the report the acknowledgement that the school still remains having that frontage on Telegraph Road, which meets the criteria of being on a major thoroughfare, and also provided a history of the fact that the property did receive a variance in two thousand and thirteen. It does sit on seven-point-four acres, that is less than the ten acres that's permitted specifically to school uses in the zoning ordinance, so that variance of two-point-six acres allowed for that school to occupy the premises since two thousand and thirteen. The operation does not impact the parking or school circulation pattern, or the agreement between both the school and the church to coordinate activities. There are currently two-hundred-and-three parking spaces, there continues to remain two-hundred-and-three parking spaces, they're required to have a hundred and ninety-one, including ten barrier-free spaces, no changes to those parking, striping, location, or circulation as being impacted by this proposed improvement. We did receive a letter from the Bloomfield Hills Baptist Church dated August twenty-third of this year, supporting the sports court proposal to facilitate safe play for students and the quality of the proposed structures that are being presented. The applicant did provide for a point of reference, this aerial with dimensions, that shows the location of the, the batting cages and the sports court, as, as being right here, the sports court and the batting cages, and so these dimensions have been provided that call out, three-hundred-and-seventy-six feet to the nearest northerly resident in the Bloomfield Chase community to the north. The distances to the west range from two-hundred-and-twenty-five feet to six-hundred-and-seventy-six feet from the west and to the south. In terms of just its location to the setback of the property line for the church and school property, it does provide fifty-one feet from the westerly property line, abutting the rear yards of the residence off of Franklin Road. There's a hundred-and-eighty-foot setback to the southerly property line, abutting the side yard of thirty-seven-eleven West Pemberton, and over three-hundred feet from the nearest Bloomfield Chase condominium residential lot line to the north. The landscape plan was provided that shows with the removal of three trees to accommodate the location of the sports court, that required based on our ordinance, the installation of six evergreen trees, excuse me, with the, with the requirement that they be twelve feet in height. in height, to match the height of the fencing at the time of planting, to provide that screening. Those evergreens are shown along that westerly edge, running along the, the batting cage fencing. That does comply with the zoning ordinance as it relates to the tree preservation and protection ordinance as it relates to replacement. So this review, this proposal was considered by the various boards for part of our special land use review. And at that time, there was consideration and discussion relating to the noise. Because of this proposal, looking at the sports court itself, the applicant was, was requesting that regarding the sports court, and primarily the use of basketball, which was the primary focus of the purpose of the, of the sports court, because as you saw in the early, in the earlier photos, they have temporary basketball poles that they're utilizing their basketball play within their parking lot. And then, in addition to that, with their proposed batting cages and their baseball practice, they're presently performing those practices and, and play within the ground itself, but utilizing more temporary and movable T-balls and structure, and fencing. So they're looking for a permanent location for those two primary uses. It was explained that the selection of the sports court came with a pickleball striping, which was noticed on the application as it was submitted to the township. So that conversation led to be more specific about what uses are being proposed, what are those hours of play, and what is the intended activities of, of the sports court. So through the conversations, both at the Design Review Board, Planning Commission, and ZBA, you'll see that there's been references to a progression of discussion regarding the usage. And specifically, the seasonal use of the batting cage in the sports court is planned for March through October, to be used during the school day, after school, and/or on the weekends. It will also be used during the summer. All games and practices are to start no earlier than 8:00 a.m. on school days, and 9:00 a.m. on the weekends, and conclude no later than 8:00 p.m. And this is referencing, being consistent with the soccer approval that was granted by the Township Board in 2021. That further, as it relates specifically to the basketball, excuse me, for the pickleball usage, the school represented that they will utilize low-impact sound pickleball rackets and balls, and remove the pickleball netting by 3:00 p.m. on weekdays with no usage on the weekends. And there'd be no loudspeakers proposed also, as it relates to noise impact. There was no additional lighting for either of the batting cages or the sports court. And there'd be no signage proposed with this request. As this was reviewed by the Engineering and Environmental Service Department, it was noted that verification is required for the adequate capacity in the storm drainage system, that the location of sports court appears to be over a private storm sewer, which is solely the responsibility of the school, and that there will be a tree protection and preservation permit required because of the tree planting. And lastly, there was no concerns or problems found with the proposal from the fire or the police department. So through the course of the review process, this went before the Design Review Board on September 6th. At that time, after lengthy discussion with the applicants, the board moved the site plan, special land use, onto the Planning Commission and ZBA for consideration to be consistent with the soccer field hours, more specifically relating to the back, the basketball usage. And then it went on to the Planning Commission on September 18th. And at that time, again, through the public hearing process, the board elected to forward to the, to the Township Board a recommendation for consideration, specific to the requirements of the Township Departments, which we highlighted in the staff report, compliance with the requirements of the Township Landscape Architect, as it relates to irrigation, that the irrigation system be tied to the present irrigation system that has been associated with the plantings for the soccer field to the north, the exclusive use of the batting cages and basketball, pickleball court for school programming only, that the pickleball net be removed by 3:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, to ensure no usage in the evenings or weekends, and that the use of the sports facilities to be no earlier than 8:00 a.m. and on school days, on school days, and 9:00 a.m. on the weekends, and no later than 8:00 p.m., except for the pickleball usage as noted above. And that's seeking the variances from the zoning board of appeals. So that then was heard on October 10th by the zoning board of appeals. At the conclusion of their consideration and their review and discussion with the applicant, they made a motion to, to grant the, the variances in the approvals as submitted. Application for all necessary permits must be with one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. There, there may be additional evergreen plantings required to screen the batting cages from public view. There is no illumination permitted for the sports court or batting cages. And the use of the sports court be limited to the agreed-upon daytime hours, which is part of the differentiation between the basketball usage and the pickleball usage. So tonight, the applicant is here before you, presenting the request to install, construct the sports court for the usage of basketball or other sports-related uses, referencing also the pickleball, and also the dual batting cages with the dimensions and locations shown. The board is being asked to consider, under what conditions the approval may be granted, subject to compliance with the requirements of the Township Departments, compliance with the requirements of the Township Landscape Architect, exclusive use of the batting cages and basketball, pickleball court for school programming only, the pickleball net to be removed by 3:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, to ensure no usage in the evenings or weekends, usage of the sports court to be no earlier than 8:00 a.m. on school days, and 8, 9:00 a.m. on the weekends, and no later than 8:00 p.m., use of the pickleball court to be limited to Monday through Friday, and no earlier than 8:00 a.m., and no later than 3:00 p.m., with the net being removed by 3:00 p.m. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. We've provided a pretty thorough report in your agenda packet, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
We're going to hold off on the board questions till we hear from the applicant, and then the public, and then we'll bring it back around.
Okay.
So first applicant, and then the public will be able to respond to what they've heard, and then we can...
Perfect.
Good evening, everyone. Excuse me. My name is Tony Anton, 6155 Indianwood Trail, also on the Board of Directors of Bloomfield Christian School. I was, had the fortune of being in front of all three bodies, Design Review Board, Planning Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals. So I heard a lot of the comments. And then, with the residents, we sort of worked out the, the various hours that Patty just mentioned. So I'm happy to answer any further questions that you might have. But we're just pleased to be here and pleased to celebrate, just this past August, our 10-year anniversary in the township.
We're going to do questions after. So do you want to add anything else, or?
You know, one thing I would like to add, based on the comments that I heard earlier, is I think part of the situation is more so on the Bloomfield Chase side than on our side. I brought with me an email, two emails, one in January, one in August, from the Bloomfield Chase treasurer, who is reaching out to us, actually, for their diseased spruce trees on their side. They apparently have a disease that is making them have to replace all of their trees, again, on their property, which they asked for our help. We said, of course, we'd, we'd support. But I think a lot of the, I wouldn't even call it holes, because I still really can't see through the, the evergreens. We planted a good 20 or 25 very large Norway spruce and other non-deciduous trees on the north border. And if you, if you stood out there and looked, they're beautiful. I mean, they're absolutely gorgeous trees, and they give a good buffer. But I think some of the remaining, or the newer gaps that were referenced are as it relates to those diseased trees on their side. And I'm happy to, to share these emails with you if you'd like to see them, but they definitely reference them to us. So I just wanted to bring that up.
And then we'll, any more?
Uh, no, unless you have questions.
We're, we're going to bring you guys back.
All right, I'll be here.
So now we're going to go ahead and open up the public comment. So you can just come straight up there, give us your name, and come on up.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Dr. Raiful Sapika. Hi, Michael. Michael knows me well for a long time. I've lived on Hidden Lake Drive, which my wife Karen Border built, and for about 30 years, and recently moved to 1035 Glenwood Court. So I'm here for some elucidation, also to make some personal comments. The reference that former speaker made to visual and aesthetic barriers is legitimate. I checked out the parking lot in the Christian School parking lot, as well as from the entry road into Glenwood and Parkway Trail. That seems acceptable. But it doesn't address auditory problems. And neither the engineers, nor the architects, nor the school board are qualified in biological aspects. Nobody's done any auditory assessments. I happen to be an ophthalmic surgeon and have been a doctor for 53 years, so I'm reasonably well-qualified to comment on those. From my home in my backyard, the sound from the football, the soccer field, is acceptable. It's not bad, but pickleball and batting cages are a different auditory harassment. I want you to be aware of that, make a note of that. And so, sound abatement is an issue that I'm not clear on how it's being addressed, as well as the proximity. They have given some measurements in terms of feet, but that doesn't really address the potential disturbance to the neighborhood, as well as myself, as well as property values. And those are significant considerations that haven't been addressed here, nor maybe could be. And so, I do remind you that this is less than a 10-acre property. And so that means that the proximity to the homes, particularly where Maureen lives, who's directly behind me, and myself, I don't think have been adequately addressed. And so, on the northern exposure side, that's where I wanted to focus my comments. And so, there are two aspects of, of this problem, because once it becomes de facto, it's not going to be easily changed at all. And so, one, noise abatement, I don't feel has been adequately addressed from the batting cages and the pickleball courts. I understand there's a restriction, because I've got the hours in front of me for 3:00 o'clock, and I think that's reasonable for the pickleball. But 8:00 p.m. is late. And so, I would ask for consideration on an adjustment for the evening hours of termination of the batting cage usage from 8:00 to 7:00 p.m., because we live there 24 hours a day. I would remind you also, it's not a geriatric community. And although, from a medical standpoint, attenuation of high-frequency sound reception in seniors is documented, we're not a, we're not exclusively a geriatric community. And so, any references to that, which apparently have been alluded to in the past, are not legitimate. And so, I'd ask for consideration on that. So sound abatement, augmentation, as well as a limitation on evening batting cage and basketball usage from 8:00 to 7:00 p.m., to reduce the interference in our quality of life. So that's pretty much what I wanted to say. I know from past experience that Echo Park...
Dr. Sapak, can you wrap it up?
I will.
Thank you.
So, there is a frame of reference here. Echo Park, which is to the immediate south of the high school, has a significant noise level. And so fortunately, we were not subject to that. But I would draw your attention to that. In other words, once it becomes de facto, then, you know, that, that becomes an ongoing problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to come on up? Just go ahead and line up, like, or? And you can't speak again, even if you did speak at the general, you can't speak again.
I'm Celia Lakin, 1040 Parkway Trail, right across the street. So I have two comments. One comment about the vegetation...
Can you address this, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
One comment about the vegetation is that when the leaves fall off the bushes, it's not just about the, the evergreens that are dying. I live right across from the hole. You can come by in the winter, and when the leaves fall off the bushes, you can see through the parking lot. Okay, that's, that's okay, and that's not a horrible thing. I would also like, but I wanted to just clarify that. I would also like to say that 7:00 o'clock in the summer is late. We have, you know, we're sitting out on our decks, eating our dinner, and I would like to say that I think 6:00 o'clock would be a more reasonable time to stop, especially, you know, you got a bunch of teenage kids out there. They make a lot of noise. I mean, we hear them all the time, and the noise is lovely, and youth is, is a really wonderful thing, and I appreciate all of that. But I would think, when I'm sitting out on my deck, having dinner at 6:00, 6:30, I don't want to hear that noise. So I would say that, for me, 6:00 o'clock would be a more reasonable time than 7:00 o'clock. That's it.
Thank you.
Maureen Devanzo, again, 1030 Parkway Trail. I would like to support what Dr. Sapita said about the noise abatement and the hours. This is, I live right next door to Cecile, and I, I am privy to, they, they're not going to put in a sound system, but they bring out portable sound systems. And I understand, the, the children have activities, and they've got a sound system. When they say they're not going to bring a sound system out there, they don't, not going to install a permanent one, but they bring them out. And I've, I heard one of the teachers or faculty using a bullhorn the other day. So those are things that I can hear in my, in my home, with the windows closed. And I don't like air conditioning, so I prefer to have my windows open. So I think it is detrimental to me that I will have to close myself into my house and not enjoy my deck or the fresh air that, for 12 hours a day, which I would, the sound abatement and the hours of operation, I would like to have reduced. You understand the pickleball noise, but the batting cage noise really has a concern for me as well. Thank you.
Anyone else I'd like to come talk? Go ahead and close the public comment. We'll bring Patty and the applicant back up. And we'll open up to board questions and discussion. Do you all want to start?
Yes, sure. I had the pleasure of hearing this at the Planning Commission. It was a long meeting, a long discussion and consideration. And I know that petitioner, Tony, Tony in the school, has always been very workable when there's issues with the neighbors. The hours of operation really didn't come up to this degree at the Planning Commission, not to say it's not valid. As, as far as the abatement of the pickleball, that was addressed by using low impact and having it limited hours and having it removed. So I certainly appreciate that. As far as reduction of hours for the batting cage and basketball to 7:00 p.m., I think that's reasonable. I really do. I think 6:00 o'clock is not reasonable. And I certainly understand the argument and the concern for 7:00 o'clock. So I certainly am agreeable with that part of it. I don't know what your thoughts are, but...
Well, if I might, it, it's really difficult. Frankly, as, as one of the baseball coaches, I have a full-time job. We don't start practice until 6:00 o'clock. And at 6:00 o'clock, we go for two hours, and we have a hard stop at, at 8:00 o'clock. Our, the majority, as I said in the Planning Commission meeting, the, the vast majority of our activity for baseball is spent at our home field, which is in Clark's the vast majority of our activity for baseball is spent at our home field, which is in Clarkston. We obviously don't have room for a field. We're not putting a field here. Our home field is in Clarkston. And when the, when the field is able to be used, we're there. We hit there, we field there, we do everything there. That's our home field. But when we, excuse me, I'm just getting over a cold. When we are not able to be there, we practice at Bloomfield Christian. So everything that we're proposing to do here is already being done here. We hit into nets. The basketball courts you saw are in a parking lot, which is frankly unsafe for the, for the kids. So all of those, those three hoops go away. It goes up on a nice, safe area, six different hoops. Excuse me, two batting cages, so balls aren't flying everywhere. But it's just, it would be really, really, thank you. It would be really, really difficult for us to stop at seven o'clock when our practice just starts at six. And you know how baseball is, you warm up first, you stretch. All of those sorts of things happen on the front end, and then you get into real practice. If it's any consolation, the, the batting cages are probably gonna be the most infrequently things used here, because the season is so short. We go from mid-March to the end of May. And our exams are the first week of June. So really, all of May is spent, almost all of it's spent in Clarkston. What we're talking about is half of March, April, and then if we ever do practices in the fall, we're obviously not gonna be there. You can't be there in the dead of winter. So you're talking about a short, you know, season for, for the cages. And for the, for the basketball, like I said, it's, it's every day now. We're just making it a more safe environment and kind of cleaning it up out of the parking lot, because it, it looks terrible, as you saw.
Yeah, no, and I mean, as far as what you've done in making temporary use permanent, I agree. It's safer, as I mentioned at the planning commission. I mean, it's a great use to do that.
And we're three hundred and seventy-six feet away from the closest home. That's, that's a long distance.
So what do you, with the batting cages, you say it's limited. You said March, April, the season ends soon after that. So what are the months that it's not going to be used?
Well, I, you know, look, if there's a seventy-degree, seventy-degree day in January, it might be used. But I'm just saying practically speaking, you know, our, our team doesn't play in the summer. You know, it's, you know, could, could they have a practice once a month or something like that in the summer? Sure. But again, it's infrequent, is, is my point. I don't want to limit us beyond what we've already agreed to, but the reality of the situation is, it's, it's indicative of the weather in Michigan. So it's, you know--
So that won't be used by your class, so during school time, that's not used in gym class or anything like that?
You, but the batting cages? It could be. I'm just talking about the, the evening, you know, to cut it to seven o'clock.
Are the batting cages locked, like when you're not using it for your specific practices? Because it's like one of the public comments that came through to us in writing, said, you know, if you build it, they will come. And if, if you put in all of these facilities, which are meant for the students and during the school day, what happens on the evenings and the weekends? If that batting cage is available, other people, I mean, I think we've all had kids and gone up to school playgrounds after hours sometimes. Other people are gonna come. And I guess I have a concern about the batting cage because of the noise.
And that came, that came out in, in, I think, the planning commission meeting. That's a trespass. There's not much I can do about somebody trespassing on our property. We are going to take the equipment out of it, so that it's not, you know, for someone to walk into a batting cage and start using it without what's called an L-screen, that's the screen that the pitcher stands behind, so they don't get, you know, rocked with a baseball coming back. You know, that'd be pretty risky for someone to go into a batting cage and do that without the equipment. Most people don't carry around an L-screen in their car to go put in another batting cage. What you see is, like what happens at Bloomfield Hills High School and those sorts of places, the L-screens are left in. I mean, all the equipment is right there. So people go in and they take advantage of it, because they think, oh, it's public, and I live in the township, so I can go do that. Our, our plan is not to keep the equipment in there. It's very, very valuable to us. We're just a small school, and those are the sorts of things that are gonna be put away when they're not in use.
But is there a way to secure the batting cage, so it doesn't get used beyond, when you're using it specifically for your practices?
Maybe. It's, it's a net. It's not like a fence, you know what I mean? So it's, it's a, it's a netting that gets, you know, secured to poles. So someone can always kind of go under it if they wanted to. But I'm saying it's not likely when you don't have equipment in there. Does that make sense?
But it doesn't have a pitching machine?
Well, if we get a pitching machine, it's not gonna stay outside. We're gonna be bringing it in and out. We, we don't have one right now. Right now, it's just meant to be live pitching.
Sorry to cut you off. Did you want any more?
No, that's okay for now. Thanks.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So for the basketball court, is there any kind of fencing or netting around it?
Yes.
Which one?
Netting.
Netting. So, because I see it's really close to part of the driveway. I don't know if that's just an emergency access road or what, I don't know, but--
No, that'll be enclosed. It'll, it'll have netting.
Okay, so there will be netting, so, okay, so there's that safety issue. And is there any, looking at the landscape plan, is there any trees going in south of the soccer field, north of the basketball court?
No.
So I know when it first came to the DRB, that's when I first got to see it. And we had asked really specifically if the neighbors were on board.
Yeah.
At that time, I, we were told yes, that everybody was on board. So knowing now that, that, that has changed.
Well, let me, let me address that, because we sent out letters to all the neighbors, and, and I think Patty included those in the packets. We then addressed the neighbors that came to the planning commission--
Just, I mean, when you were at the DRB.
Oh.
We were the first, the first one before--
So we had gotten a letter from the church. We had gotten a letter from Mr. Christie at 3670 Telegraph, and nobody else responded. We had conversations with the treasurer and the president, excuse me, of Bloomfield Chase, and they decided not to write a letter at all. So nothing was happening. We didn't get any negative. And then today, we got this letter. It was the first time in the four-step process that we got this, this one letter. And then the other comments were addressed at the planning commission level.
And then we talked about, again, we were, pickleball's a real touchy subject that we don't often approve--
Yeah.
--because of the noise issue. And, and even though I live a half a mile from Telegraph, at night I can hear it, because you don't have the ambient noise, you don't have the normal. So you do hear things. So the later it goes, the quieter the township gets, the more likely people hear it. We had talked about, they're different, and sometimes they're more expensive, but there's different paddles, different balls. Do you want to address what you're gonna be--
Yeah, we agreed to do that at the planning commission level. The, the, what do you call those?
Low impact.
Low impact for sound. Again, the, if, if I could do it all over again, I would have had the sports court guy take the pickleball striping off. We didn't, that was just how the court came, and we're buying it. Like, so it's, it's, it, they just sort of do an all-in-one. So they have four square for the little kids, they have basketball, they have pickleball. They just try to do these courts so that you could, they could appeal to anyone and everyone who might use it in a different fashion. We don't have a pickleball program at Bloomfield Christian. And if you told me today, Tony, you could do all this, but no pickleball, we'd say, okay, that's okay. We're not, our, our athletic director and our gym teachers, they might teach it, because it's such a popular sport, but it's not on our radar. This is basketball for us. You know, this is meant to take the three hoops that are in the parking lot and make it up on tops in a safe, netted environment for the kids.
So I have a couple of questions. So the, the noise abatement to me is big, because we have had issues with pickleball and the sound of pickleball. And I guess it, it kind of sounds to me like, if you really weren't planning it, then why are you buying the nets and asking for the use of the pickleball? Because if you don't provide the nets and you don't need pickleball, then that takes that off the table. It, it seems unnecessary. I've worked in schools for twenty years, and the basketball courts, absolutely, and the safety and the netting, so that the ball doesn't go in that back driveway in case a car comes through there, because it, it goes all around the back of the school. Totally support the soccer field. Batting cage, not so much, again, because of the noise. And it, it's a small property. I know that ten acres is a minimum for an elementary, and you have seven point four, and that was, you were granted a variance on that. But it's like, first it's the school, and then it's the soccer field, and then it's the basketball court. Okay, I'm still on board. But pickleball and batting cage, you know, sound travels. It travels incredibly. And, you know, you can put all the trees you want, which sounds like some people might actually prefer a few more trees, but there's still the sound. And, you know, we've had complaints from people where they can hear it coming from a, a country club, the pickleball courts. That's how the sound travels, you know, further, further away. If it was a bigger property, you'd have even more of that distance. So I guess I'd like to see more restriction on the batting cage hours, because I can appreciate I wouldn't want to hear everything in my backyard on summer evenings. Because, like you said, you'd want to do it in nice weather, but that's when everybody wants to be in their yards.
Yeah.
So I'd like to see a little more harmonious agreement with, with the, the neighborhood.
Yeah, and I, I tried obviously to, to show the distances, just how far away we are. I mean, when we're on our property at the school, we can hear the marching band from, from the high school. That's how--
That's how sound travels.
That's how sound travels. We get it. But we are a school, and we have been here for ten years. And I think we've been a really good neighbor throughout this process. So we're, we're really just trying to figure out, like you said, how to, how to do it harmoniously. And honestly, I have no problem getting rid of pickleball. We really don't have an issue with that at all. The batting cages, as I said, it's, it happens now. We hit into nets now on the property as, in our practices. So we're trying to just clean it up and put it in a safer environment, frankly, where we're not chasing baseballs into the woods all the time and things like that. So, you know, eight, eight o'clock is, is really not that late, especially in the, in the spring and summer months, when it doesn't get dark until nine-thirty, ten o'clock. I don't know. It's just, it'd be really, really tough. I mean, maybe we could do seven-forty-five, but it's just, it's tough. As I think through as a coach, how this works, it's difficult to, you know, to take it all the way down to seven o'clock.
What about the hours on the weekend of the batting cage?
Well, I could say definitively no, nothing on Sunday. We don't do anything on Sunday at, at the school. So I could take Sunday completely out of the mix. And frankly, on Saturday, you know, if you wanted to take that on Saturday down to like five PM, I would do that. It's gonna be so rare anyways, that we're, if we have a Saturday practice, it's more like ten or noon.
And you're not hosting games, because there's no room, there's no field.
No.
Right.
Right. Talk to, talk to us about the summer usage.
Very, very infrequent. So the school season ends. To brag a little bit, we are the two-time state champs for baseball at our division, which is small. But our, the, the end tournament is like the first Saturday of Janu-, of June. And there is no team-affiliated usage in the summer. The only time we would use the cages in the summer is we put on as coaches, a couple of clinics for our kind of rising seventh, eighth graders, those sorts of things. And we would do that from time to time, but it might be once or twice a month, max, throughout the summer.
During the summer?
Yeah, max.
Does the school host any, or does the church host any camps or any activities during the summer that might use these facilities?
No, sir.
Great question.
But would that change? Would they be hosting things in the future?
No, we've said it's only for Bloomfield Christian use. So we're not, we're committed to not bring in--
Okay, but, but then does that mean, okay, so I, my child attends Bloomfield Christian school, and it's summer, and we've got the, you know, we've got the batting cages, and we want to go use them?
We have a policy at our school. They can't do that without permission from the athletic director or the board. So could they do that for the basketball? Yes. But no, they can't just go out there and use the batting cages on their own.
But would you, with the, the people who can grant the permission? I mean, it seems, would seem reasonable that they would grant that request from a--
Well, what's, I guess what's wrong with that? If it's, there are, are students, and they're within the hours, if we agreed to certain hours--
Well, it's just because you keep saying it's gonna be so infrequent, and it's only really gonna be during this time, but maybe sometimes during these other times also. So as a board, we have to make a decision if this is something we want to approve or not. So we have to understand what's the actual use gonna be. Because right now, it's all, you know, hypothetical, right? We think this is how people are gonna use it. But as was mentioned, if you build it, they will come. So now people know, oh, this, this court is there, these batting cages are there. Maybe that's gonna be more of a reason for them to do something that they would have never done previously.
Yeah, I don't know how to answer that. I mean, are they coming to use our soccer field? No. We, we just use our soccer field, our teams, our coaches, our, our students. Are they using our playground? No. We have a nice playground. People aren't coming off the street and using our playground. Frankly, there's way nicer stuff in the public facilities. I mean, we are a little school. We're less than a hundred and eighty students total. That's JK through twelve. We have one grade per class, one class per grade. I mean, we're a small school by design. We want that small teacher-student ratio. So we're just trying to clean up, you know, we, as you know, we've done this in chunks, because we don't have the resources of the public school system. So when we did our addition to the school back in 2020, that happened. When we did the, the soccer field a year later, that's what, then, now this, there's hardly anything left. We might put a couple more things in the playground in, in future years, but we're, we're out of land. I mean, this, this is, we're just trying to kind of complete the beauty of our, of our school. And, and, and we're very proud of it. But I, I don't think anyone has to worry about the masses coming to Bloomfield Christian and using it outside of our hours.
Can we get some signage to that effect?
Yeah.
Some what?
Signage.
Signage.
Like, for example, but what worries me is you do have a church associated with you that does have a lot of members. They might start using it outside. To Michael's point, a signage, it would say, "School use only."
Sure. That's a great idea. I'm happy to.
And then also the bullhorns and such, those comments.
So the only thing I could think of as it relates to that is, we have a senior night, which would be once in the fall and once in the spring. And I'm guessing that's what that is. Our coaches honor our graduating seniors and do a little presentation for them. And I'm guessing that's what that is. In the future, I'm happy to, you know, have them do that, like, on the south end of the, of the, of the field, so that it's, you know, even further away from the residences. That's the only thing I could think that that is, because we don't have a, a system out there. So maybe that's--
There's no gym teacher that would be out there teaching--
Not that I know, but I made a note, and I'm gonna make sure that we, we let, I let the, the school know not to, not to ever do that.
Patty, may I?
Yeah.
So I appreciate what you're saying, especially because you, you guys do a lot of these things now. You guys play soccer, you play basketball, and you hit the ball now, right?
Yeah.
But it seems like before we did any of these investments, that you're trying to do for safety, which is a good thing, right? I don't think any of the residents here would ever want unsafe conditions for kids.
True.
And I don't think anybody on the board would ever want anything like that. But they had a problem with the noise before we decided to do this. This is just now the catalyst for them coming forward and talking more about it. So as, I'll, I'll let you address everyone, Mike. So as part of being in the neighborhood and being part of the neighborhood, you are, again, a pillar of the neighborhood. You're a church, you're a school. You invest in the local community. We also have to make sure we're good neighbors and stewards to our neighbors. And our neighbors are coming forward and telling you some of your concerns. Whether you agree with them or not, they're coming forward and saying it. So we have to work with them to kind of address those needs as best we can.
Yes.
So again, they, they are coming with reasonable concerns that if I live next to a school, I would understand I'm gonna have some of those noises, right? I'm gonna have some of that traffic. That is the point of living next to a school. It's how do we mitigate that, so that we can work together and be together and enjoy that neighborly vibe that we need to be putting together? So I, I understand it from both sides. I do agree with Tracy Barnett in terms of hours. I can understand that-- I can understand that if I'm putting my son down at 8 o'clock, I do not want to hear batting cage noise. I can understand that if I have a newborn. And again, the neighborhood may have young families in there. But I have to think about all the neighbors that could be affected by it, as well as your students. So I think the hours are a reasonable thing. And then finding a way to find either more trees or more sound dampening to address, even if it is only March, April, May, and part of June. Again, if we don't have the leaves and the trees, the noise is going to travel. And because we're making this investment, I think we can find a way to do that together.
Yeah, thank you. I agree. You know, I think that, well, I just wish that they would have brought these comments to our attention earlier. Because it sounds like it's soccer related and that was approved two-plus years ago. So if there were issues, we haven't heard a single complaint. In fact, we get neighbors who come and watch our soccer games from Bloomfield Chase, which is really nice to see. But I just, we've always said, we will work with all the neighbors in this process and we're happy to.
And I do like that you've already said you'll take pickleball off the table. Please sit down, sir. We already are done with public comment, but thank you so much.
After you, Amy.
Yeah. I'm so sorry, but you're going to have to sit down. Okay, so you've already said you're taking pickleball off the table, so that's really good to hear. You've already said no Sundays and you're saying Saturday at 5 o'clock.
Yes.
So it sounds like, timing-wise, we just have Monday through Friday to deal with now. You had mentioned 7. I'm so sorry, but we already had public comment. Public comment is closed. So we already had 7 o'clock was what you had suggested.
Yeah, and the other thing too, I do have to agree with what Tony had said. As far as, public comment did go out, Design Review Board, Planning Commission, ZBA, this meeting, they have been responsive all the way through. And I've known Tony a long time. Doesn't mean I'm going to agree on everything with this, but he's always been responsive. The school has been responsive when they're made aware of the issue. Now, tonight, he's being made aware of some new issues that really, if they were that important, and I'm not minimizing how important they are, they really should have been at the planning commission. And in that-
So we're still, we're still going to address the fact that there were comments tonight. So I'm so sorry, but we're, public comment has closed. So we, right now, it's a board discussion and we are already discussing all of the concerns that were brought up tonight. So we need to keep focused on moving forward. So again, pickleball is now off the table. Monday through Sunday, there won't be pickleball, correct?
Correct.
So that's already knocked out one big thing. That was, the true comments that I was hearing before tonight as well as, was pickleball and batting cages. Because it's a different kind of noise. So thank you so much because that takes one completely off the table. So we have pickleball you're willing to take off the table. For the batting cages and the basketball, you already took Sunday off. You're taking Saturday to 5 o'clock. So again, I am so sorry, but to the board, Monday through Friday is what we're focused on right now, is Monday through Friday. So as a board, do we have a discussion with that that we can do going forward?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Well, we also said that schools, that there will be signage, that it's for school use only.
Yeah.
And are we going with the 7:00 PM?
That's what I'm asking with this.
Well, I'm just saying, is that kind of where our thoughts are?
Is there any more discussion on the time of 7:00 PM?
I think 7 is reasonable. 8 seems late to me.
I mean, practice could go from 5 to 7. But people have to make exception, I mean, for theirs, from their side. I mean, 5 to 7 is still daylight and a good time for practice if they feel they need the two hours. I mean, everybody has to make-
So 7, not 7:30, we're going with 7?
7.
And if there's any other discussion, otherwise it sounds like, yep.
Just one thing. I think Chris said it really well a minute ago, as far as the community effort. And Bloomfield Christian School has always done that. I've just been here a couple of years and seen you guys here before and it's been a good, always a good effort. And sometimes it may seem like a lot. And I, you know, I welcome your presence. I'm glad you're here. But when you chose to build here, there were additional challenges you may have to face because of the small space that you might not have had to face somewhere else. So I must, you must admit that, you know, that this isn't a surprise that neighbors nearby would be like, oh, the noise. I mean-
Sure.
So that's all sort of part of the package about being here, the advantages of being here. And then there's some challenges that you faced and we're facing tonight. I also must say that, you know, sometimes people don't, you know, a lot of people don't like to complain. So the fact that they've come now, I'm glad they have. You know, I would sit in my house and put up a lot of crap before I'd probably come to a board meeting at night and take this time to, you know, come do that. So it just takes, you know, for some folks, a little bit more to come than others. So, you know, the fact that, you know, actually those folks that just sort of put up with it are maybe the ones we really want to hear from because it's gotten to a point where now they are coming as well and expressing concerns.
And there was something brought up about Sunday, obviously, because you have a church, you're saying there's no, but knowing that there are other religions around. You did mention that Saturdays, you probably wouldn't go past 12.
I said 5.
I thought you said 5.
Well, you said definitely 5, but it's probably usually much earlier.
Yeah, I mean, we, it's like, it's tough to schedule practices right now. So if we had a, if we had a time that worked, you know, I think 5 is more than reasonable if that would be okay with you guys. I trust the wisdom of this board. I'm just trying to think off the cuff here. It seems like if we were to have a practice, it would be before, we would end before 5 o'clock. We would end before dinner on a Saturday. So-
I think the frustration with Sabbath for another is Friday to Saturday at sundown.
Yeah.
So it's literally during their holy time. So although we've addressed, because the church is busy on Sunday anyway, I think one of the main complaints that was coming was there is, there is more than just the Christians around you, you have neighbors of all faiths.
Sure.
So if you, if you truly didn't think you would need to go till 5, if you could go earlier on Saturday, you might get even more reciprocal love from your neighbors if we honored some of that as well.
I mean, I guess it really depends if we're, if the board thinks that 7:00 PM on the weekdays is where they're going, then we probably are going to have to have some Saturday practices because I can't, we just can't do it before 7 o'clock. Might be able to, but like I said, by the time we stretch and throw and get warmed up, it's 45 minutes. I will have 15 minutes to hit. So if we could, if that weekday could go to even 7:30, it'd be a huge help for us. I would take Saturday to 3 if we could go to 7:30 on the weekdays. And again, it's not going to be every day. It's going to be, you know, just when we're not in Clarkston.
Well, I have a question. So they've already been approved for 8:00 PM for soccer, right? So are we talking about limiting baseball and basketball to 7:00 PM and soccer will still be 8? Or are we talking about reducing soccer from 8 to 7?
Soccer's not on the, you know, it's the batting cages.
I understand, but I just want to point out, and I'm not making a judgment here, but we're saying that soccer can go to 8, basketball and baseball is going to 7.
The baseball is a different sound.
Exactly, right.
I understand, I'm just pointing that out.
Soccer's a lot of running and a lot of cheering.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree. I'm just-
Yeah, I do see a reason why I treat them differently.
I'm just pointing it out.
I thought we were just talking about baseball here.
We are.
Just baseball, not, okay. I want to make sure.
He's trying to make up words to help you to say if we're doing soccer.
No, no, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just clarifying what the board is talking about because we've already, they've already got till 8:00 PM for soccer. If we're limiting this to 7, I just want to say, okay, we're limiting this to 7, soccer's 8, that's fine. I just was, point of clarification.
But I think what Michael brought up with basketball is basketball's already there and it's not restricted. So like soccer, so is, are we saying, I mean, can we stop people from shooting in open hoops? But I think the batting cage is more the concern because of the sound now that pickleball's off the table. I didn't think the basketball shooting, I don't, I don't know, that's what I'm trying to clarify because you were including that with the batting cage.
Basketball is just as noisy. We get a lot of complaints about basketball courts around the township from schools.
All these hours we're talking about don't, are not, have we included basketball in that or are we just including?
That's what, yeah.
Right now, they can go to 8.
Everything except soccer because soccer was under previous agreement.
These hours are-
Well, right now, I mean, it was, okay, soccer was 8. So right now, theoretically, basketball's still 8 because we haven't regulated that.
It's not come before us, correct?
Just clarifying.
Just like, I did not know that batting was going on and that hadn't come before us as a special use.
It's just outdoor gymnasium, gym class play. Yeah.
Wouldn't need a special program.
No, we don't have the capability to regulate their, that type of level of play, you know, even when they're playing four-square in the parking lot.
Right.
Right.
So knowing that that is the reality that we're dealing with.
Well, I'd be okay with three-square.
Hopscotch, I'm kind of thinking.
It's 2D squares.
I personally like the 7 o'clock on weekdays and the 5 o'clock on Saturday personally versus say, 7:30 or 8 on weekdays and 3 o'clock on Saturday.
Just for batting we're talking about.
Yeah, I sort of thought we were just talking about batting, not basketball, but-
Well, but I think what Tony's saying is, can they throw balls to each other and play catch and do fielding drills or, and they just can't hit the bat?
Yeah.
Right? Is that, is that what you're, that's what you're asking?
Yeah, I mean, of course.
Talking about the batting cage.
You just can't use the batting cages.
Just the cages, right.
But they could throw grounders, they could-
Do you want some legal advice?
Sure, they could do that today.
Right, well-
So it's just the batting cage.
Okay, but-
It's the new accessory structure and the use of the accessory structure, the batting cage. And you could bat outside of the cage.
Well, I mean, that's the thing. I mean, this is what we're, this is what we're doing right now. Right? We're limiting ourselves, we're in the cage or outside the cage. I mean-
I see, well, one difference of clarification is that, one, we're approving a new structure, which you can bat outside the cage and that's the way it's been. But when you put in a batting cage that you need permission for, and once it's there, I mean, I think we've all seen batting cages and it isn't just some casual pitch and hit. It's bam, bam, bam.
That's what gets in here is the fact that they're proposing to erect an accessory structure and the use of that accessory structure, it needs a special use. That's what we're talking about.
So are we-
And it's fully within our discretion. We don't have any legal obligation to just simply say yes. If you're going to deny it, you've got to make sure that you articulate, articulate all the, I don't know how many elements there are of special use, probably 10, 11, something like that.
Yes, fair amount.
So it sounds like most people are in the same zone unless there's somebody who wants to speak outside of the times that have been suggested, the taking pickleball off. Is there anyone else that has new discussion points? And if not, I would look for a motion.
Make a motion. Might need assistance because we made a few changes here. But that we approve the Bloomfield-
Christian School.
-Christian Schools located at 3570. The request subject to compliance with requirements of the township departments, compliance with requirements of the township landscape architect, exclusive use of batting cages and basketball for school programming only. The use of the sports court is to be no earlier than 8:00 AM on school days and 9:00 AM on weekends and no later than 8:00 PM. And then also, we indicated, I don't even know if I have to put that in the motion, no pickleball.
Did you mean 7:00 PM? You said 8:00 PM.
Oh, 7:00, 7:00 PM. 7:00 PM and then Saturdays at 5:00 PM. No Sunday use. And then also erecting some signs indicating that it's for a school use, or students only for school use.
And you should include no pickleball.
And okay, and no pickleball-
Definitely.
Is to be included on the court.
And this is limited hours again, just for the batting cage. Basketball, the sports court, other than pickleball not being allowed, is the same as the soccer hours.
Yeah, and that's what kind of threw me off with the hours.
I think you're saying we can't really regulate, say the hours of that, correct?
What, the sports court?
The sports court, sure.
The sports court, you came up.
Okay, I thought you said we can't stop.
So the sports court is until 8, like the soccer field. The batting cage is until 7 on the weekdays and 5 on Saturday. Nothing on Sunday.
That's my motion.
Support.
Motion by Tracy Barnett, support by Tracy Klinzke. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Thank you all very much. And Ms. Murray, thank you for the water.
Had to save you, you were choking.
I know, it was not good.
No.
Good luck, Tony.
So next we have, consider approval of change order number four for 2023 J.Ransley Safety Path Repair Program. And we have Director Corey Almus here today.
Hey, Bork. Thank you for your time this evening. So let's just get started. The safety path- We're currently in year one of a three-year program. The purpose of this or our intent for this change order is to utilize unit one pricing. Year one unit pricing, sorry. With the recent approval and passing of the Bloomfield Village SAD road paving project, ESD staff felt it necessary to do an inspection of the safety path within the SAD limits. Do you want me to pause for a moment? Or you want me to keep going?
No, you keep going. He just ran to the restroom, I'll be right back.
Okay. And through that inspection process, we had identified roughly $408,000 in needed repairs within those SAD limits. Our purpose is to avoid safety path construction traffic on the newly paved SAD roads if we were to wait and do it after, after the roads have been paved. Funding is available for this work. So what we're talking about specifically is the red and blue segments of the SAD within Bloomfield Village. We've identified or inspected all of the SAD roads. Now, not every road requires safety path repair, but we did inspect within those red and blue roadways, roadway limits or SAD limits, what needs to be repaired. So this is just a photo of, you can see the yellow, I'm sorry, the pink paint mark there. That's a trip hazard. That's, it's hard to see that from here, but that is a heating sidewalk flag that creates a lip greater than, greater than an inch. So that's our criteria for a trip hazard. Another trip, you can see there again, another trip hazard. Here, we're looking at several factors, or a few factors anyways. You've got trip hazard here, you can see the growth in the sidewalk. You've got cracked safety path there, cracked concrete, and then more evidence of heating sidewalk, safety path in those segments. And this, again, this is a kind of what we see throughout the village is damaged, cracked, broken concrete, and this is ideal for replacement. It's something that we'd want to address now rather than later. So that's all I had, but I wanted to show these kind of nice photos of our other safety path projects and it is fall, so I thought I'd include those. But staff is recommending a motion to move to approve change order number four for year one of the 2023 Safety Path Repair Program in the amount of $408,000, $8,015.95 for the removal and replacement of 51,015 square feet of safety path in the SAD limits. Any questions?
Oh, go ahead.
So I have a question. So some of this must be internal. They have safety paths internal in this area? So some of this must be internal, they have safety paths internal in this area? Because if it wasn't internal, then there wouldn't be the concern of the trucks going on the roads.
These are the places that they're ripping up the road to do the new road.
In the neighborhood.
So they are within the neighborhood?
Yes.
Because most of our safety path programs are main roads, that's why, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, so, yeah, there's existing, throughout many of these roads, not all of them, but throughout many of these roads, there's existing safety path that has been long neglected and requires replacement by the townships. The township's obligated to make the repairs to the safety path.
Okay, because it...
No, they're not, they're not on the main roads.
Right, because there are the main roads that touch those red and blue areas, I just wanted to clarify, because it's a lot of safety path repair, so it seemed like it must be more internal to...
It is. It's primarily consistent with the SAD road improvement projects. It's the safety path that abuts the SAD roads.
So we're going to have Jerks address, so this was questions that came up, because these were built before the township bothered to do our program, not bothered to, sorry, before we were lucky enough to have our own program, they went ahead and did this, but you can explain why we are legally obligated to do these things?
Specifically, Michigan Law MCL 691.1402 requires the township to maintain sidewalks slash safety paths that are adjacent to public roads, which this is. So legally, we're obligated to maintain these. Even though they're located within the neighborhood, for lack of a better term, there's still something we have to maintain legally.
Sure, it's still a safety issue, and it does make sense to do it before you fix the roads and then bring the trucks in.
But there were some questions, though, since it wasn't laid by us, are do we, and that's exactly why we have to, and then some other questions came up of what happens if Wabique decides to put in safety path on their own and saves the township millions because they do it, then we would be responsible to maintain it. But if a neighborhood was able to spend the millions to do it, then we may maintain it.
Thank you.
I appreciate you guys taking the time to do this ahead of time, so that we can obviously fix and maintain these before they do the sad millage, so that we can make sure that those roads are as nice and last as long as they can for the residents who really want that. Obviously, we invest in that kind of infrastructure, we want it to last as long as possible. What would happen if one of those safety paths are damaged due to the sad construction that's being done in those neighborhoods? Who is responsible for that?
Yeah, great question. The contractor that, if they, after the township came in and repaired before we handed it over to Road Commission for Oakland County, the contractor performing that work would be responsible for any SAD, or, I'm sorry, any safety path repairs after we hand it over.
So our residents wouldn't be on the hook for, even though we made the improvement and that repair brought up to that standard, if there is something that damages during construction, which always happens, the contractor will warranty that work and take care of it, and it'll still be up to that same standard we left it.
Yeah, yeah, great question. We did speak with the Road Commission for Oakland County representatives, and, yeah, they're fully aware of that. They're in support of the township getting out there in advance and addressing our problems, but the last thing we want to do is have safety path construction, traffic, heavy equipment, and work on brand-new, newly paved roads. So we want to get out in front of it, and that's our primary intent for this.
Dirk can give you the, another...
I was going to say, there's generally a maintenance bond that's posted to make sure that that obligation is covered, so...
Sure, and then also, and I'll add to that, that this repair program doesn't involve ADA ramps, okay? And our COC's aware of that, too, because when our COC comes in, or their contractor comes in and does the removal and replacement of either curb and gutter or the pavement itself, they have to then adjust the ADA ramps to meet the road. So we wouldn't go in, and our program, or this doesn't, change order doesn't address the ADA ramps. Our COC will address that, or contractor will address that through the SAD process.
So it ensures that our residents aren't double paying for work being done twice to meet that obligation?
Correct.
And then you make a good point, too, because if somebody does damage ours, like, for example, utility, consumers damaged ours, there was proof they did it, they had to come out, and they had to do it to the standards of the township. And the township staff came out to even maintain, whenever somebody does have to fix it, they come out and double-check that they do it to our standards.
Yep.
Well, this has been a common practice, before I was on the board, they were building this mega house on a path that we walk regularly, and you could just see where, when they demolished the house and they were starting the early infrastructure, they went right across nice, conditioned safety path, because you know me, I'll tell you if I've got a bad spot. Really nice stuff, and you could see where they just literally went back and forth over it and destroyed it, and I just said, that's my tax dollar, called the township and said, who's responsible? And they said, the contractor, and it didn't take long at all, and I walked that way again, and like I said, I wasn't a part of the board, and there was fresh sidewalk. Like, they didn't wait till the house is done, because six years later, the house still isn't done, but they fixed the sidewalk right away, the safety path.
Yeah, Val, that's a great point, and something that my staff and I, we discussed today, in fact, and it's kind of, it's not always easy to catch contractors doing that and destructing safety path and sidewalk, but when we do, we hold those contractors accountable and making sure that they are spending their dollars, or the developers or the builders' dollars to replace that safety path, and that's not tax dollars.
Yeah, I was just quite pleased, just a regular resident made one phone call, and it was taken care of really quickly, so I appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Just a quick comment, which is great work, you brought this to our attention a little while ago, Corey, and, you know, it went through the wringer. We talked a lot about this before it came here.
Yes, it did.
And you worked very hard to answer all of our questions, and thank you for doing that, I'm glad we're getting it done now, appreciate it.
Good.
And this was because he came to a meeting about the SAD, when you were there just to learn more about it, and he heard, he thought, oh, my gosh, we need to get in there fast. So this was...
Well, partially, yeah, it was our intent anyways. It was always in the back of my mind, but someone did make, one of the residents did make a comment about it, and that kind of just, that said, okay, we need to be proactive in this, and, but it was, I think it was always our intent, if the SADs pass, then I think we owe it to get out there and do a thorough investigation, and if the continuing SADs pass in the village, or anywhere else for that matter, that does have existing safety path, then we'll continue that process.
Sorry, I got one more question, sorry, Corey. So if we have an area where the safety path is actually going around a tree, which we have a lot, where the trees there, they put the safety path around it so it doesn't get, and those trees are being removed, are we affecting any of those safety paths so that it can be...
Great question.
Boy, that is a great question. That really is a good question, and that's maybe one of those one-offs, or if the tree is in the process of being removed, and we'll take that into consideration. There's, what, 48 trees being removed as part of this process? And if the path is meandering around the tree, can we take out that whoopee, so to speak, and make it a straight-line shot? Great point, great question, and something certainly, if the board chooses to approve tonight, our staff is going to be out there first thing tomorrow morning marking sidewalk and for removal, or safety path flags for removal, and that's something that we'll address. So if we can accommodate that through this program and say, hey, hold off on these, let the trees be taken out, a part of the program, we'll come back during construction, but not after construction is completed, then we'll manage it that way. Our contractor, Italia, has been fantastic, and I've got a long history with them, and they're very accommodating in many ways, and having a contractor like that at our disposal is always nice, and they'd be willing to do that.
Thank you, Chris, that's a great point, because you could just see where we'd go around these trees.
Yep.
And then even if it's only four or five, say, they're going to take out the tree, maybe damage the path, but also it's going to be like, why did it go like that?
Yep.
Thank you, Corey.
Yep, great point.
Any more questions?
I would love to make the motion to approve the change work order number four for the one-year 2023 Safety Path Repair Program in the amount of $408,015.95 for the removal and replacement of 51,015 square feet of safety path.
Support by trustee Kolinsky, support by trustee Barnett, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work on that one.
Thank you.
And next we have our treasurer's report from Treasurer Shostak.
Okay. So keeping in the theme of finance tonight, our auditors, the treasurer is required to submit to the board a report of township investments every quarter. In addition, the board holds a study session in January to review the annual performance of investments more in depth. But in the packet, the quarterly report I provided is broken into three categories, I just want to briefly cover it. Each category of investments has its own rules and regulations about the types of investments that can go into it and how they're managed. So the first category are operating funds, which we use to cover day-to-day financial obligations. So we keep about $2 million in checking accounts, and the remainder, we keep in a very liquid money market account or in treasury bills, and we are currently earning in excess of 5% on our money markets and treasury holdings. So the levels of cash will ebb and flow seasonally as we collect taxes and remit to the appropriate agencies, and then, of course, we collect our portion of the taxes with the winter tax. So basically, October and November is usually going to be our low point in cash during the year. The second category of funds are the, what I call fiduciary-directed investment accounts. These are funds that we hold on behalf of others, and I manage the investments in these funds. So this is basically our defined benefit pension and our retiree healthcare plan. Both plans are invested in a mix of asset class, including fixed income, equities, and real estate, and the Financial Sustainability Committee and the Retired Employees Health Benefits Trust meet quarterly to review the investments and provide advice. The third category are the defined contribution plans, so I call them participant-directed. So while we oversee the custodian of the funds, each participant in those plans can decide how they want to invest their particular funds. We have a relationship with investment advisor Schwartz &amp; Company, located here in the township, to work one-on-one with our planned participants to manage their investments in a style that works for them. As I said in the memo, the overall equity markets were lower for the last quarter, so our investments with equity exposure did decline, but over the last 12 months, the market is still up rather significantly. For example, the S&amp;P 500 index was up over 20%, 21.6% to be specific, even with last quarter's decline. The last thing is it relates to the defined benefit pension plan and power, which has been a rather fast-growing retirement services company, bought the pension business of Prudential, which includes our pension plan. I've already notified all of our pensioners of this change, and that their payments will start coming with a different name on the check. If you do hear from any retirees about this issue and they have questions, please direct them to my office, but I will emphasize that nobody's benefits are changing, it'll just be a different name on the check, although I assume most of them get ACH anyway. But the name on this statement will be different, so, but nothing in terms of their benefit will change. And then my last point is with the appointment of trustee Kolinsky, we now have an opening on the Financial Sustainability Committee for a township resident. So in the packet, I put a press release that we will be issuing, asking for applications for this important committee. If you know of anyone that should apply, please let them know, let me know, and if anyone has any questions, please have them contact me. So that is my report, I'm happy to take questions if anybody has them.
Anybody have any questions? Nice job on your first official...
Okay, thank you.
All right. So next we go on to considering approval of a resolution in support of proposed local watercraft controls on Gilbert Lake, Wing Lake, Chalmers Lake, Wabique Lake, Orange Lake, Soden Lake, Forest Lake, Lower Long Lake, Meadow Lake, and Island Lake, presented by Clark Brook.
Thank you. Sorry to have popped out there for a minute, people might have saw that I did that. I have been in communication with the DNR today, trying to get some more information from them, and in fact, just received an email from lieutenant, who's not the final decision-maker, but an important decision-maker, to provide some additional information that I can share with the board and any members of the public who are listening. So actually, here it is, I printed the email. I was glad to see it came in before the time to sit down and talk about this a little But there's a, you know, a memo that is in the packet that kind of summarizes, you know, where we're at. They're working on this, as you know, months ago, maybe about a year and a half ago. The DNR has been working on an investigation now for many months, too. We're at the point in this process where the DNR will issue a notice in the newspaper for a public comment to occur. A period of time for each lake would be established. Presently, the time for public comment on the lakes are Thursday, November 16th, starting at 5:30 for Soden Lake, and then followed by Orange Lake, Island Lake, Forest, and Lower Long. There will be, as I said, the DNR notice of this schedule, and my office will be providing notice to the HOAs involved and the homeowners involved as well. The second public hearing is Monday, 11/20. That's for Chalmers Lake, starting at 5:30, followed by Meadow, Wabique, Gilbert, and Wing. This is our last opportunity to formally provide information, facts to the DNR to support our petition that the township board passed about 18 months ago, requesting that the DNR approve local controls on these different lakes. The local controls, as you might recall, we proposed, in a quick summary, are to continue the prohibition on internal combustion engines, motorboats, quote-unquote, and expand them into high-powered electric motors. When our ordinance was drafted in the '70s, it was a no-motorboat, but permitted electric motors. At that time, we're essentially trawling motors. Today, you can get an electric motorboat that goes faster, or at least as fast as any motorboat on the water. So the, this item asks that the board reaffirm its request, there's a particular resolution in the packet that's been prepared, and it's asking essentially for us to reaffirm our position with regard to these lakes, and to point out that, you know, we believe there are additional facts and circumstances that should be considered in addition to the preliminary factual reports that were provided in the packet that the DNR prepared and sent to us in late September. And that would be a task that if the board adopts that resolution, that I would take on to send out. Drafts of those communications are in the packet as well, and, you know, that's a quick summary. I want to note, too, that it did just, as I mentioned, just receive an email communication from the DNR, and I've asked them, I mean, you can read the DNR summaries, and they do not provide a preliminary recommendations to whether or not to adopt, modify, accept, or anyway, or reject our proposed local watercraft controls, even though, I may point out, it is required for them to do so by statute. They've declined to do so and left us to read sort of between the lines. I read, when I read those, clearly that the factual circumstances, they do not presently see to support any local control, which means only the statewide controls would apply, unless we can come up with some additional information, facts, to persuade them to view this differently. The local, the state laws that would apply, which I divined by reading the statute and then did review specifically with the DNR to confirm, is that on each of these lakes, within 100 feet of shore, would be a no-wake requirement, and then after that, the standard rule would apply, which is traveling any type of vessel, motorized, electric, internal combustion, what have you, up to 55 miles an hour. Not that anyone could really get up that fast on any of these lakes, especially some of the smaller ones, but be prevented from trying all day long, constantly, back and forth around. So the email I just received mentions a couple of interesting items that I wanted to mention, that what they're looking to do is determine whether the existing laws, which I just referenced, are not sufficient to address the compatibility of uses and public safety for recreational boating. And he highlights that, you know, the controls are not supported by some of the other items of particular concern to many residents, that their decision would not be impacted by mental issues, wildlife habitat, or personal preferences. And he highlights that this public comment, public hearing time, is an opportunity to gather the last bit of additional information that they may have not yet discovered to make a recommendation slash decision about whether or not we can develop and maintain the existing local watercraft controls. According to state law, and we talked about DNR earlier today, according to state law, you know, local municipalities do not have the ability to regulate water bodies in the state, that is with exclusive control of the Department of Natural Resources, and it is their decision to make, we can only ask, as can our residents who live on these lakes, make a request to the DNR. The factors that they consider are set forth in the statute, and it's, I guess, it was nice to receive a response from the lieutenant, and to make, you know, clear to us that our obligation at this point in time to support our request is to ensure that we bring forth additional information, facts, that will support the reasons within the specific factors listed in the statute, since environmental concerns, wildlife, or personal preferences, you know, are not factors they're going to be looking at. So I could go on, but I just thought maybe I would stop here for any conversation, question, or discussion. discussion.
Yeah, I found this particularly interesting as a boater myself, not in a township lake, but I looked up, my lake is considered smaller, and we do allow powerboats. It's 230 acres, I believe, and we have a powerboat, and you cannot get over 35, 38 miles per hour if you went end to end from this lake that we utilize. Some of the electronic motors that we've been seeing, and some of the surfboards, they go very fast. This lake is already bigger and governed this way by another municipality. But, that being said, I looked at each one of these, and the size of each lake, and they are tiny. They are a fraction of the size. One-half size was the biggest one of this whole group. Most of them are just little tiny pieces. And to me, the biggest thing is, this is a safety issue, because by the time you get 100 feet away, and you try and go up to 55 miles per hour, or even 25 miles per hour for that matter, there just isn't enough lake, besides, you know, personal preferences with noise or anything else. These lakes are very, very small, so I am still in favor of, you know, talking to the DNR and the state and seeing if they will make an exception, because if the residents bring it to us and it's a safety issue, then I think we need to do our due diligence and follow it through.
Especially since they have preventative maintenance to avoid safety problems. You know, the comment of, well, there's nothing bad has happened, so we can't enforce it. Nothing bad has happened because we enforce it. So that's a frustrating loop that you've been dealing with.
Yeah.
Well, I wondered about that, because, and even from this email that Clerk Brook just gave us from the DNR representative, saying that, you know, statistics and documentation are very important, essentially to say that if you've had incidents that need to be rectified with the law, but then we don't have the, so it's sort of like, you know, what came first, the chicken or the egg? So I don't know how we.
You know, that's a great point, and one of the things that we've tried to impress upon them is, we, everybody that lives, the vast majority of people that live in those lakes believe that there's an ordinance in effect that prevents them from doing what we're trying to do. And the fact of the matter is, is the DNR and the information they sent back to us has already said that our existing ordinance, as far as they're concerned, is unenforceable. So now all we're trying to do is make the custom of what people have believed they're operating under formally approved. And when we had the informal hearings earlier this year, there was almost, it was almost unanimous in the support for it. There was, I think there was one person that had a question. Nobody was against it, and so it's frustrating for me to have an agency like the DNR issue a preliminary report that's supposed to contain a recommendation and didn't. And then I read this letter, and it's interesting, but I'm not sure that it adds anything to the conversation that they've already kind of given us, and I agree with Martin 100% that reading between the lines, it appears to me they're going in the wrong direction, and that's why Martin drafted these resolutions, to let them know that this board is in support of, you know, what we're trying to accomplish in an actual resolution form, so.
And I think, you know, it's really, again, being proactive and trying to reflect, you know, the values that the township has, that the board has. Commends you, Martin, for doing that. I know we've talked about it before, as far as the importance of moving forward with this, even knowing the trend is unfortunately not local control, but nevertheless, we shouldn't roll over. We should take the opportunity to let them know what our thoughts are, and also the residents throughout public hearings, so I think it's very beneficial and important.
Well, I think it's disappointing, the DNR's initial response to us already, you know, things change, and with, you could only have trolling motors, but that technology has way changed, and so the safety issue, and so we don't have examples, we have people that live on these lakes that have serious concerns. Do we have to wait till somebody is seriously injured to say, oh, look, now we have two injuries on this lake and one on this lake? Will you talk to us? Because I think, just in common sense and looking at the factors, there's these little lakes, if you put some of these new high-powered electric engines on them, it's going to be incredibly dangerous, and boating is already, it's fun, but boating is very dangerous, and a lot of people don't understand, and people turn over, I've seen people turn over jet skis and boats that, to a driver that doesn't really know what they're doing, and that's exactly when injuries happen, and it's frightening.
Especially because there's so many swimmers on a lot of these lakes that do open swim because it's safe.
Because they think it's safe.
And jet skis, they won't be able to stop fast enough if they see them at the last minute. Is there any other comments or questions for Martin? I want to thank you. He has done a lot of work. What you see before you is months and hours of his time that he has spent, not just with the DNR, but the time he's taken with all of the residents that have questions, and they're in a place of fear right now of what is being taken possibly from them. So I want to thank you, because you have handled quite a bit of time and effort on this, and also handled them with a lot of care and compassion that they deserve, so thank you.
Thank you. It's my pleasure. As a personal aside, I don't live on any of these lakes. I wouldn't, you know, benefit one way or the other, but I do personally know, from my experience, you know, about the appreciation that the homeowners have for the quiet enjoyment and the safe uses these lakes offer. My grandfather owned property on Lower Long Lake, and I used to go there as a child in the '60s and the early '70s, and he had a little boat with a little trawling motor and a sailboat. It was always very nice, and we'd go out and catch bluegill and, you know, and sunfish and really enjoy it. And so it has been, even before the township passed ordinances in 1970, the residents have formally appreciated these lakes as, you know, quiet bastions of, you know, uses other than motors, because, you know, they talk here in the DNR, and I'm moving on to another topic, about incompatible uses, and, I don't know, truth being told, to me, there isn't going to be incompatible uses, because soon as we have motorboats driving around out there or jet skis, the uses that are presently used will simply leave. They won't be swimming in the lake, they won't be kayaking back and forth or using sailboats, because that is incompatible with, you know, a lot of the motorboat activity, and it will be a shame. I feel very optimistic, though, that the facts will bear out in our support, and that we can get the DNR to agree with us, but I just want to encourage, make sure that, you know, that to the extent that any of us can be there, that we are all there. Since everyone is invited, it could, you know, it, in seven, you know, more than quorum could be present, well, the intention is to notice these as board meetings. They are not our public hearings, though. We will not be here at the dais, it'll be the DNR official only, but our presence in the room potentially creates an OMA obligation to notice this as a special meeting of the board, so you're all encouraged to be here and to speak. If people cannot attend on any one of those days, the public comment is also accepted via writing, so that can be done by email, and I'll communicate that information to the residents in a latter form, so that everybody has an opportunity, even if they're in Florida or something, to, you know, to make a comment. So in the end, I feel confident that we're going to get where we need to be, but presently, we're not there yet, and if we don't get there, I mean, people should be aware that there's going to be a significant change in the current status, so.
If we're in agreement, I am prepared to make a motion in support of a resolution for proposed local watercraft controls on the following lakes.
You have to list them?
Yeah, I need to list them. All right. Gilbert Lake, Wing Lake, Chalmers Lake, Wabbeak Lake, Orange Lake, Soden Lake, Forest Lake, Lower Long Lake, Meadow Lake, and Island Lake. And thank you, Clerk Brook.
Support by Clerk Brook. I'm sorry, by trustee Murray, and support by Clerk Brook. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. And now we go on to the next resolution, considering approval of a resolution to respond to township's resolution of February 26th, the proposed local watercraft. That is also you.
So this is the reciprocal piece to this. Because, you know, we don't make these requests lightly, we are concerned about the safety of our residents. The information thus far with regard to two lakes, I would recommend that we withdraw that as a sign essentially of our good faith, that, you know, that when we see the facts, they speak for themselves and respond. That's Haynes Lake and Fox Lake. The other primary argument, which the DNR brought up, again, is these lakes are wholly contained within the Wabbeak Country Club. They are presently lakes that our ordinances prohibit motorcraft, watercraft with a motorboat, but because they're wholly contained within Wabbeak Country Club, they're controlled, you know, we don't need local watercraft control. There's trespass laws that prevent anyone from going on there and using these lakes. They're very small, one's really just a pond, and the owner, one of the owner representatives, the Wabbeak Country Club, agrees with us that they don't see a need for an ordinance or to continue that request, and would intend to enforce their rights via trespass laws if there were ever any issues, but they don't anticipate any. So with their support, the owners of these lakes, I'd recommend that we withdraw our request to the DNR with regard to Haynes Lake and Fox Lake, and focus on the ten or many lakes.
Any questions for Clerk Brook?
No, I'm making a motion. Can we approve the resolution to rescind township's resolution of February 28th, 2022, of the proposed local watercraft controls for Haynes and Fox Lakes?
Support.
Support by trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Thank you again, Martin. And next we have approval of payroll vouchers from October 28th, 29th, 23rd. And if there's no questions or comments to changes, I will approve motion. Support by trustee Vicki, support by trustee Kalinski. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And our last motion, we adjourn.
I move adjourn.
Motion by Clerk Brook. Support by trustee Vicki. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.